All right, called the meeting to order June of fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Like to welcome everyone out tonight. Commissioner Hardy is not able to make it, so I'll be filling in for him. And if you will, let the record show that all is present except Commissioner Hardy. Need a resolution to approve the agenda.
Maybe we approve the agenda.
Second, any discussions?
I need to, I just need to give an update when it's my turn. If that's okay, just an update on a, on a resolution about the mitigation credits. I may not, I may not need to add that, I just need to give an update on it.
It won't be actioned?
No, no.
He won't need to amend it if it's not actioned?
Okay, all right, you won't wait till we come to the Commissioner's part?
Be perfect.
Okay. All right, any addition? I don't know what we got a vote on it, so all in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any addition or deletion to the agenda approval? Okay, brings us down to the public hearing. Alcohol license for sending a sign doing business as CNS Food Mart LLC. Guess we need to...
We gotta open the public hearing by resolution.
Maybe we open the public hearing for alcohol license for sending a sign, DBA CNS Food Mart.
Second. More discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we need...
Now you're just asking the public if there's anybody wants to speak for our...
Okay, any of the public want to say anything about this, speaking for or against this?
I make a motion that we close the public meeting.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion that we allow them to move forward with the application for an alcohol license for CNS Food Mart LLC.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor of this?
Aye.
Okay. Oh, brings us to the public comments, Mr. Mickey Bates.
Good afternoon, gentlemen and ladies. I'm here just as a follow-up from the work session meeting that was held last week. And understand that after talking to Chairperson Hardy this afternoon, you might not want to do, move forward with any formal motions or anything else today. So I guess I'm here to ask if you have any questions, comments, suggestions, or ideas about the proposed project that we have brought forward to work with the county on the paving of road two sixty-four and the two hundred fifty thousand dollar contribution participation from the homeowners owned that road. Here to answer your questions. Hopefully you were able to look through the little packet that I handed out and then the little summary sheet that I'd actually prepared to read before the previous meeting, but I decided to not do that. It sounded a little bit too formal, so it's just a little summary of what I presented to you at the work session meeting. And, and then the packet that I left you was pretty self-explanatory. It was a map showing the road we were talking about, the residents on that road, the amount of contribution, actually included a bank statement showing cash on hand at, at that particular day. And to remind you that we do have two hundred fifty thousand dollars to participate in this project with the county if they see fit to move forward with it.
Did you tell the residents to see if that, you know, if you want the strip on gravel y'all still in asphalt?
Yeah, they're... Well, they really want that, they, I mean, you did such a good job on thirty-two, all the way out to the bridge. They like it, they, you know, and, and the deal was, boy, if we can get that on two sixty-four, yeah, we'll put in five thousand dollars apiece. And I really don't want to, I, I know there will be a large number that would not want to put that money in there for that. And me being the one that's having to do the accounting and the bank deposits, and if we don't do this, I'll have to write the checks back to them, fifty or sixty something of them. And so I, I really don't, I, I guess what I'm saying is, let's do this, or let's just don't do it.
Well, I, I'm in favor of this, I think, I think we can get up the money this year or two, I, I really was prepared to...
Well, I think we can't do anything until, until we put it in the budget for next year.
Yes, I was informed, yeah, I was informed today that we, we can't pass a resolution on this until the budget's set for next year.
All right.
So what I want to suggest is, so...
Can I ask some questions?
Yes, sir.
All right, we know asphalt's going up when we bid it again. Why wouldn't we, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do this, why wouldn't we vote to amend the budget and take it out of general fund balance and do it at a cheaper rate? Because it, it may double when we get our next bid.
I'm, I'm all for that, Mr. Parnell.
How much, what, what kind of difference are we talking about, Tony? Do you have an estimate on the total?
Five hundred forty thousand is what we...
Total, or our part?
Oh.
So we're talking about...
Two hundred and sixty four thousand.
And that could be five hundred if we wait till the next budget year. Huh? Because y'all handle the money and I'm looking for some guidance here as to why...
And we all looking at you.
...the budget and drop. Okay, it's just a thought. If we're gonna do it, now's the time to do it, not next year when, when the price doubles. And it will double, it's petroleum-based.
I think we need to discuss some options. There's another option, and I ain't talked to Mickey about it yet. I'll talk to you about it this week sometime, Mickey. Another option I think y'all like better, it won't cost us as much money. But I gotta get a few more details.
We've got our money, and I don't know how much the county's willing to put in it. And is it something that we can't discuss and...
No, I need to get a few more details before I can talk about this other process.
So that's, I think that's what all those things are. If we don't want to do asphalt, then they don't want to do it. What I can get from him and I think...
We want a better road, and we want, and, and everybody is sold on everything that you've done so far, and that's what we want to do. And that's why they all jumped on board and wrote their checks.
This other process is better than asphalt, better than this asphalt we've got right now. It's like I told you last, I went and looked at it last week. And if I'm doing a road by my house, or I'm gonna vote choices to do a road, I'm doing this new process. But I gotta, I gotta look at one more thing before I want to vote either way for us to do your road.
Well, we don't have to make a decision tonight, but if we're gonna do this, it needs to be done in time to lay the asphalt before the end of this, this year. Because I promise you, when we rebid it, it's going up.
These people has put in two hundred fifty thousand dollars of their money. And Commissioner Williams, I'm not against what you're saying, but before we say we're gonna do something else, I think they need, need to agree to it. And, and the majority of those folks are gonna have to go look at this stuff to see. Because if they don't know what it is, you know...
That's why I want to talk to him this week.
And, and but...
They don't agree, then...
Mr. Bates, I don't think there's gonna be a problem of getting this done. We just need to get everything...
And I understand, and I'm willing to listen to what Alan's got it, I just know my job then would go be to go meet eighty more people to go...
I'll go with you, if you like what I'm talking about, I'll go with you.
So I, I guess I like the easy way out. I've got the money and I know what they agreed to pay for, and I'd rather do the easy way out, what I'd rather do, but...
Well, I'm looking, I'm looking sustainable.
Yes.
Let's, let's engage Tony, and Alan can bring his idea and find out what kind of timeframe we're talking about, about getting this done in this budget year. We don't have to vote on it tonight, but I don't think we need to kick it to next budget year if we're gonna do it.
I maybe table the decision on this until our next regular meeting.
Two weeks from tonight?
Two, two weeks from tonight when you meet again.
Yeah, two weeks.
That time enough, Alan?
Oh, yeah, there'd be plenty of time left.
That's fine, I mean, we're, you know, look, we, we've been working on this since October. And, and then in March, we decided to formally approach the county with this, and we approached all of our neighbors and in the community on the road. And so far, about eighty percent of them have brought money and sent money. And so we're on board with it, it's not like we just started yesterday in not, in that big a hurry. We know it takes time to do all these things. So we just appreciate the willingness to work with us on it if, if we can get that done.
Well, the thing that appeals to me about this is there are eighty homes that are affected by this. And for us, I don't think you'll ever find the project that will affect eighty homes for two hundred fifty thousand dollars on the road.
That's just, I agree with you.
It's a, it's a, it's an astounding, I, I had no idea they were letting me...
And the maps in there to show you those, I, I included a map with that showing each lot of land and each home on there. So anyway, gentlemen, I appreciate your time and your ear.
We, we got a motion on the floor to table this to the next meeting, we need a second. Commissioner Bone, second, we table this to the next meeting, is any more discussion about it? Are all in favor of table the next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
So we'll, I assure you, Mr. Bates, this won't be swept under the rug.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Okay, consent agenda, we need a...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we agree to the consent agenda, which would entail approving the minutes of the May tenth meeting, the claims list, list dated June fourteenth, the new hire of Philip Hamby by the sheriff, the new hire of Thomas and, Thomas Robinson the third by the sheriff, a request for increase of pay for Tiffany Easterling by the commission office, accepting the resignations of Jonathan Goggins, Morgan Scarborough, Sean Ellison, and Chris Ward for the road department, permission to advertise and hire for four truck drivers. The new hire of Jonathan Roseberry as a full-time laborer on a rideaway crew for the road department at the attached rate. For the transit department, we would reclassify Lisa Naughton from a full-time operator to a part-time operator, reclassify Jasmine Aggie from a part, part-time operator to a full-time operator, pay rate shown. Request to advertise and hire a part-time transit operator. And for the sheriff's department, approved to pay the AC repairs for the jail in the amount of two thousand ninety-two dollars and fifty cents.
That's not consent, that's not consent.
Is that where the consent is?
Yeah.
Mm, 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 it goes on, it goes all the way down to the transit.
Wrong page, yeah.
Yeah, all the way to page three.
Out of the jail maintenance fund, and for the revenue commissioner, he's requesting a resolution to continue collecting the existing five-dollar county title fee on all title applications. For the commissioner, commission office, a resolution to approve a safety coordinator resolution and a five-hundred-dollar stipend. Request a resolution to suspend appropriations to the industrial development authority. Request a resolution to approve and relocate the, the June twenty-first work session to judge speech courtroom. A resolution to purchase a peach pageant ad in the amount of three hundred and fifty dollars. A resolution to, for an ad in the business Alabama magazine for the amount of eighteen hundred dollars. A resolution for hiring of a cleaning service for the ag talk, office, the current service has resigned. And for the road department, approval of a preliminary plat for late U Estates. Surplus, two thousand twelve Dodge Ram fifteen hundred in sale on gov deals. Then number will be noted in, in the, a minute, in the minutes. A resolution to purchase the motor graders off the state bid list. For the EMA, a resolution to adopt Division D Hazard mitigation plan for the transit to surplus the listed vehicles. And a request to allow the chairman to sign all the agreements and grant paperwork for the federal grant between the ALDOT and, and the FTA.
Second. Okay, we got, Commissioner Parnell made the motion, Commissioner Bone, second, any more, any discussions?
Yeah, I want to, this, fully suspending the stuff with industrial development authority, the appropriation to that, I mean, oh, we not need that development anything else, we just keep...
It's gonna be temporary. No, it's, this is, this is temporary, Commissioner, Mr. Hedley, they requested this, and it was what the board wanted to suspend this temporarily until get some...
Well, the, the money that had been appropriated for the last few years would have been to work toward the two twelve project. So we don't need that large sum of money anymore, so we still have some left in our, in our budget to work with. So when the next project comes along, we'll come back and we'll do amendments as needed, so.
But it, it would just be held in the industrial development fund?
That's right.
Maybe not?
Yeah, we need it.
Yeah, yeah, and our, and our...
Yeah, right.
Right, the, what we call the trade school money, but it's the industrial development fund.
I think that's confusing sometimes because the money's there for industrial development there.
And it can't be used for anything else.
For industrial development as well, isn't it?
Right.
The, the law says it can be used for rural and economic development.
Not root paper, we're strapping. Just to clarify.
All right, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving this consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All right, brings us to elected officials, sheriff. Gerald, you acting sheriff tonight?
All we have for this is two... All right, this is, let me help Gerald out here. This was to rebid the jail janitorial supplies because our supplier that had initially been awarded the bid could no longer sell it to us at that price. So we went to the second bid, and they could not provide all of it at their bid price. So if that's the case, our examiners say you have to rebid it.
We want to suspend the rules to do this.
That shouldn't, that shouldn't be the case, why would it take a bid if, if they're not wanting to give surprise from the...
You can't force somebody to provide. They don't, they can just tell you they, they can't buy it, therefore they're not obligated to supply it.
They may have a eight or ten percent margin on it, and it's going up thirty percent.
How many we suspend the rules?
Second.
Any discussion? Well, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I maybe grant the request of our... Miss Sylvia to rebid for the sheriff, the janitorial service for the jail.
Second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Staff reports, commission office, Miss Sylvia.
The first one on my list is regarding excess bids, and that's the greater than three years but less than ten. And on the advice of our attorney, I want to table that until proper redemption certificates can be provided.
Need a motion to...
Do we need a motion to wait?
I'm just, I, I don't guess so.
You, you don't, you don't need a motion for that.
Okay, thank you. All right.
The other is to request a resolution to approve the twenty twenty-one insolvent. And this is for the revenue commissioner. He needed this by the twenty-fourth, and we would, we would not meet until the next week. This is, of course, the twenty twenty-one insolvent, errors and taxes in litigation, and uncollected insolvent and taxes in litigation for the previous years. This is something that we do every year, but it has to be by a resolution.
I'll make that resolution as red.
Uh, we got suspended rules.
We need to suspend the rules for that, I make a motion, we suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now I make a motion to approve the request of resolution to approve twenty twenty insolvent, errors of tax litigation, uncollected insolvent, and taxes in litigation for previous years.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Road Department, Mr. Tony?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had sent out bids to look at our dirt road reclamation project, so I need a resolution to receive the bid that we received.
I'll make that resolution that we received the bid from children contract, and that was your only bid?
That was our only bid.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor of receiving this bid, say aye.
Aye.
And then I would like to get a resolution to reject this bid. Or to award it, it's up to the commission.
Can you tell us what the bid was?
Seven hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour.
Can you tell us what specs were?
The specs were to remove the sand and/or any debris that were in the ditches and to haul them off.
I'll make a resolution that we deny the bid.
Second.
I got a motion in a second, is any discussion on this?
Was that it, that was...
Yes, sir, that was pretty much it.
Not reclaiming the ditches or turnouts or anything?
Well, it had no tree cutting in it, it did not have any kind of, basically widening. It was going to be to remove all the debris, reclaim the ditches and everything, and to haul the material off on selected county roads in the county. You know, we were gonna give him a list of roads.
Mr. Tony, am I wrong, if we reclaim those ditches, won't that involve of, of re, basically reditching and widening? Because those places are, our ditches are six, eight, ten foot out from where the ditch used to be. So that will, oh, Mr. Williams, reditch it if it's, you know...
Right, I mean, in removing all the material, it's gonna be reditch.
It would be no road prep or nothing, it'd just be, right, just be cleaning that stuff out, right.
Any idea of how many miles in an hour, or how many hours to a mile?
We sat down with one of the contractors and went through, how, how would you, you know, accept this bid? Or how, what, what would you do, what would be your operation? And it would depend upon how much water they were gonna have to go, you know, and did the road just have sand in it, or was it loaded down with, you know, sticks and limbs or any other kind of debris that was in it?
Too many variables to this...
It, it, there were a lot of variables, which is why I said there was no way you could give a hard bid per mile, because every hundred yards could be absolutely totally different.
That's why you have to bid it high.
Yeah, or they...
For every variable, yeah.
Right, and that's what he said, it, it would have to be such a high bid. I mean, the cost of building a new home versus remodeling, you're gonna get a higher labor rate because you don't know what you're gonna get into. So it was a recommendation that the only way to bid this out would be on an hourly rate, which would include about four or five pieces of equipment, depending upon, you know, how far they had to haul the material and what was going to be, you know, in front of them.
It actually may not, we, we don't know if it's a good buy or a bad buy, really?
Yeah, buy a piece of equipment, that's a cheap thing.
It is, I just, but you don't, you don't know.
It doesn't matter what it costs if you can afford it. I mean, you're talking about...
It's a lot of money.
You know, in, in a week, I mean, you could destroy your budget in a week, which the commission kind of had, we know.
Looking at close to forty thousand a week, just a forty-hour work week.
Okay.
Well, we've discussed this without a second on...
Yeah, I second motion.
He's second.
You're second? Yes, sir. Yeah, we just need to vote on it.
What was the... To deny? Who, who? To deny, okay.
I had the resolution to deny.
You made a ref, to deny it. Personally, I think we need to deny it until we can have some further discussion among ourselves and you, Mr. Tony, about this. Because we, like Mr. Parnell said, we could be looking at, we don't know what.
One of the things that we could look at, and I, I'm assuming we're still in the discussion phase.
Right.
One of the things that we could look at was allotting a forty-hour week, which would be thirty thousand dollars at seven fifty an hour. But it's just seeing how much ground they could cover, you know, but we had to figure out where we're gonna plug that back into Tony's budget, because Tony's already out of fuel money. And he told us in the work session the other day that he was gonna start working with his budget, trying to move some line items around to get him to the end of the year, because diesel fuel and gas is so high. So if, if we're gonna see how far an hour would go on average, we're gonna have to figure out how he's gonna pay for it.
There's another thing to take in consideration too, is what's it worth to us to get it? All our ditch is in good shape as far as maintenance down the road to keep them that way.
But in my opinion, Alan, and everybody has one, it does us no good if we're not gonna put something on the road to keep the sand from beating back out of us. We've talked about that, but you can fix it all you want to, and two years from now, or eight inches of rain, you're gonna be right back where you are today if you don't put something on it to prevent it from happening again. Some type of treatment will crush the run or whatever.
That's my point.
The only place that we won't be right back where we are today, oh, Mr. Parnell, and I agree with you on that, the sand washing in. But at least when they go in there and scrape the roads, they'll have some sort of scraping, not just keep coming out into the road, letting it grow up and creating new ditches. That's, that's the biggest advantage we have, if we don't go in there and do something else, then you're talking about another major expense there.
Well, I'm, I'm, you know, I, I've got my stated motel six engineering thing here, but it might be that you can till that sand back into the road and roll it in cheaper and you can haul it away.
Some of it you can, but some of it's gonna have so much junk in it, what Tony and I looked at, big limbs, so much grass. You know, some of it you can't. So we got a motion to deny this bid in a second, is any more discussion? Okay, all in favor of denying this bid for right now, say aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to give an update, we had talked a couple of months ago about County Road one ninety-nine. We've got the two big hills on either side that go down to a bridge. We have gotten hold of a contractor out of Tuscaloosa that will be over here a week from Friday. We're gonna have the road prepped and everything ready. Those hills are basically just solid rock, you can't get any kind of material to stay on it. So he's gonna come in and chit-seal both sides of that. He said that he could do that in a half a day, and so we have another road, County Road four eighty-nine, that we're gonna have ready for him to go over and shoot while he's here that afternoon. So we'll have County Road forty-nine and County Road one ninety-nine.
Tony, you're gonna do all of four eighty-nine or just that bad?
Just that bad section, right, that's good.
One ninety-nine, you're talking about at the bridge?
Yes, sir.
Beginning of the bridge, all up to top of the...
Both sides.
What day is that gonna be on?
Friday week, a week from coming through.
Two weeks?
A week and a half, yes.
Well, we're gonna have a good base under it, Tony, before we shoot it.
On County Road one ninety-nine, we will, I mean, it, it's solid rock.
Yeah, it is, but rock, yeah.
Yeah, it's...
If they can get it shot level, that's...
He, yeah, and, and we'll have that ready to go, and then we are rebasing County Road four eighty-nine, that section through there.
We gonna roll it in?
It's being rolled in.
And we've got all the ditches on one ninety-nine down that first hill cleaned out, turnouts.
Yeah, they're gonna be, they're gonna head there next week. We didn't want to get there too early and then get a rain, and we have to do that. So we feel like we can get that prepped and ready about three days before he gets here. And then we're gonna have all the materials stockpiled out there and everything, so we'll start on that.
Tony, I got one more road I want to ask about, since you've got this guy coming. We're missing big segments out of Manuka Park Road going in, and we hadn't paved it. Is that something that he needs to do there?
We've already talked to wiregrass, they're moving back... We've already talked to Wiregrass. They're moving back into our county in a few weeks.
But the base is missing, is my point.
Yeah, we're, we are going to go in there and shoot over that.
I didn't know if it was too big for us.
Right, and then Wiregrass.
Okay, so as long as we can handle it?
Yes.
So, you said how many week? You said Wiregrass is gonna be here?
He just told us a couple of weeks. They've got us now back into their schedule.
We need to figure out what we're gonna do with this road that Mickey brought before they get here, where they can do it while they're here, and you don't have those mobilization costs and all. So, can you kinda keep us updated on that?
Yes.
On when they're coming?
Right.
Do you have any prep?
We'll be able to keep them busy for a couple of weeks.
I see, so how long they gonna be here once they get here?
Yeah, we've got a couple of weeks worth of work for them to do.
So, if it's two weeks before they get here, that's next meeting. Then if they stay here two weeks, we can decide something next meeting.
Yeah, you basically still have a month.
Do you have prep to do to Mr. Bates' road? Or is it good enough to...
We will have to do some clipping of the shoulders and...
No pikes or anything? I haven't been on it, so, okay. Good to do, thank you.
All right.
Since you're on that subject of coverage and roads, are we changing our practice on putting covers under roads we're gonna repave?
Not gonna, well...
Well, we need to ride out 37 to the county line from 24, 24th County Line. You can tell every cover that we've put in. And that practice, in my opinion, we need to change it. Because it's not done that way in other counties. They do it, let it rest a year, rain, elements, pack it. You keep rock on it, and you pave it, and you don't have dips. We're gonna have dips on 17 between 22 and Isabella. Already got two of them.
Yeah, we use crusher run or stone, pack it in, leave it uncovered as much as we can. Usually, we shoot over it with chip seal before the asphalt goes over it.
Yeah, but it ain't working.
If we can get a year's notice then on what roads...
If that's what we need to do, then we need to give you the time you need.
We need a long-term plan, yeah.
Yeah, plan.
Because most of these have been chosen just a couple of months before we're ready to go.
Okay, we need, that practice needs to change because it's costing us money.
Yeah.
And costing all of us grief.
Mm-hmm.
Complaint.
Thank you, Mr. Tony.
Thanks, Tony.
Higgins Ferry, Mr. Giles?
Yes, sir. I was just asking for a resolution for the slab in the building to be built for the ice machine down at Higgins Ferry. The, on the lowest estimate we got, the 3D building.
Make the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion?
So, this is just a cover? It's not an enclosed building?
No, it's gonna be a 12 by 16 slab with a cover over the top.
And it'll have power run to it?
Well, they don't run the power to it on this.
You'll have to handle that.
Yeah, we will run power to it.
Just make sure everything's covered all in one bid, was my point.
Well, now, on this bid, it's just a concrete slab and the cover.
It's just a quote, a quote, and we're accepting the quote, isn't that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, quoted it.
Yeah.
Is this the company that done what you said could get on it pretty quick?
Yes.
Okay. All right, all in favor of this? I didn't see it, aye?
Aye.
Okay. The whole business, the dirt road reclamation project, I think, Tony's talked about that. Anybody got anything else that want to say on that? Oh, if Commissioner Hardy had anything, he's not here tonight. But I think we've covered that. All right, brings us to commissioner reports. Commissioner Bone?
No, sir.
No? You don't have nothing? Okay, Mr. Giles covered it for me. Commissioner Hedley?
No, sir.
Sure, I don't have anything. Commissioner Meams?
Yes, sir, just a couple of updates. We're, the IDA is, we're getting a resolution. I've got a resolution to authorize and approve an assignment of the mitigation credits. So, I'm working on getting all that paperwork signed. When the chairman comes back, I'm gonna get him to sign it. And then, I'll get the mayor, Mayor Meams to sign it. And then, I've got to track down Westerveld somehow and get them to sign it. And then, we'll be able to assign mitigation credits over to the city and the county. And then, that will be covered. The only other update was, I've got a meeting, when I say aye, the ag cooperative district has a meeting set up. I think we said next, I'll have to look back, but it's next week anyway. I think it's next Tuesday, no, next Monday at 8:00 a.m. We're gonna have a meeting at the IDA office. And we'll have the paperwork ready. It should take about 10 minutes to sign. And it'll literally be everything we have to do to turn over the conveyance of everything to the city and the county associated with the two twelve project. So, the governance of it is what we've gotta do now. The property's been turned over, the deeds have, but it's still under the authority, the governance. So, we'll turn that back over and we'll have that done next week. And then, we'll be done with that. So, that'll be the, actually, basically, it'll be the dissolution of the ag cooperative district and the dissolution of the beginning of the ag authority, which I'm not in charge of that. David Eppson will have to hold that meeting. But we've gotta do all those in order. Just an update. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Mr. Parnell?
Just a quick note, it won't be actionable. The Business Alabama folks are gonna be, you know, doing their feature magazine on Chilton County. And we're gonna work with, with the chamber and the IDA and all the municipalities and county to try to put together a showcase of all of our county and the things that we have that would make people want to be here. And I think focus would be on recreation and location and quality of life and those type things. But I would ask all of y'all to put some thought into things that need to be discussed and featured and run those through Miss Sylvia. She is gonna have a group of people get together, probably be Jimmy and some representatives from the municipalities and hopefully the chamber, as I said, and IDA, and kinda lay some groundwork of what we need to discuss with the people that, the editors that write the articles and interview us and all. So, if you would, if you guys would, just put some thought. I know we've got, we've got, you know, Manuka Park and Higgins Ferry and Jimmerson's Park and some industrial development things that are going on around. There's the hospital, there's a lot of good things to talk about. But if y'all will put some thought into it and give Miss Sylvia a call with your ideas so that we don't miss something that we need to be showcasing and spotlighting.
Okay. Commissioner Williams?
Yes, a few months ago, we had an issue with Norfolk Southern in Stanton. One of the contractors basically completely blocked a road in front of Miss Atchison's house right on the east side of the railroad track. And I asked Matt, we had to take several men, a couple of pieces of equipment to get that road clear of the rock they had dumped in the road and left there overnight. And I asked him about sending him a bill. So, I moved it, Chilton County Commission instructed Tony Ware to forward a bill to Norfolk Southern for the cleanup of their mess on our road.
So, you've made a motion for that bill to be sent?
Yes, sir.
You want a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
It's a chance of that getting paid. We don't really know. We just need to do it.
There's a good chance of it getting paid, yeah.
If we take the right steps, it'll be paid.
Yeah, they have a claims...
There's no question they did it.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I don't know how many of y'all's phones rung off the hook, but mine started. And my text blew up all night because at 9:30 that night, it was still in the road. And Matt had been told, Matt Everston had been told by Norfolk Southern Safety Department, they'd have somebody down there and clean it up then. At 7:00 the next morning, I'm getting ready to go over there to clean it up. I've got a flat, I can't go. I called Tony, they were already en route to clean the road up. So, it was pretty much 24 hours. That road was blocked.
We may have to write them a letter, but they'll pay for the letter too. We have to write a letter.
I love wishful thinking. Let's try.
Well, the reason I'm saying this, I've been involved with some stuff like this before. That they'll make you think it, you know, they won't, but they will. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor of letting Mr. Tony, the road department, get a bill and send this to Norfolk Southern, say aye?
Aye.
All right, carried? Anything else, Mr. Williams?
Oh, yes. I have a... Mr. Bates, can you hear me?
I can.
At our last meeting, your fellow attorney who was sitting in for you, I had asked him to forward to you a request concerning the withdrawal of a motion, a second to a motion, and where I could find that, because I haven't found it. So, could you please tell me where I could find that?
I can't tell you sitting here in Tampa, Florida, where to get that. But I did the research on that, Mr. Williams. You were called before. We discussed this at a prior meeting. And I believe I gave a quote citation to it, of course, at that meeting. I have to go back and look it up for you, but I certainly can show that to you, yes.
Okay, well, my note, my note said, and I could have written it down wrong, that it was part of our rules and procedures that were adopted by previous commission. I think it was in '05.
Well, I don't think it's rules and procedures, nothing about the commission. I think it's interpretive issue of what the rules and procedures say or don't say to the chair as it's already to do, administered in the meeting thereafter, since you have not adopted Robert's Rules of Order to govern your procedures of your meetings.
Well, I guess that would be my question. Where and what publication would that be found? So, if you can get that to me, that would be greatly appreciated.
Sure, I'll be glad to provide you what I have. Okay, what's the basis of the commission, how I'll be glad to get this in.
All right, thank you. Nice.
All right.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Hold up, we got one other commissioner. He, him, but he may have spoke. Miss Sylvia, did Mr. Hardy have anything for you? Okay, we got a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Meeting adjourned. Thank y'all.